As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the April 21st, 2022 Budget Work Session Meeting to Order at 7:30 PM. And with that, on April 20th, 2022, I received a request from Councilor Dole to participate remotely in the April 21st, 2022 Stanton City Council Budget Work Session due to a personal matter that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councilor Dole to state the personal matter which makes it unable for her to attend tonight's work session. Councilor Dole?
I am out of the country.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
So it's Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three. I move to allow Councilor Dole to remotely participate in the April 21st, 2022 Stanton City Council Budget Work Session due to a personal matter.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second, Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Dole, will you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
I am on the Danube River, somewhere between Vienna and Budapest.
Oh, nice. Could everyone on council hear? Councilor Dole? Yes, everyone in the audience?
Sounds pretty nice, yeah.
I always wish we were there with her.
All right, well, welcome. All right. The next item is to review the budget. Ms. Beauregard.
Thank you. So Mr. Treier, our CFO tonight with us, he's going to do a quick overview of kind of where we stand with the budget, including some budget modifications or amendments that have occurred, mostly with outside agencies. So he'll walk through that, and then he'll walk through the budget ordinance that you will approve or consider at your next meeting on April 28th. And then Mr. Jeff Johnson is here to talk about recycling again. We promised we'd revisit recycling. And then, of course, we're here to answer any other questions you might have about the budget. So I'm going to turn it over. I'm going to run his PowerPoint.
Thank you, Ms. Beauregard. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here for a final review of the proposed FY 2023 budget before consideration occurs. On Slide Two, the FY 23 proposed budget equals 142.2 million, and is 22.3 and 11 million above FY 2020 and 2022's budgets respectively. When we finish the work session last week, we seem to have one outstanding issue concerning the collection of recycling. We will go through a summary of our proposed budget first, and Mr. Johnson will address our options concerning recycling afterwards. On Slide Three, we review the aspects of the 2023 proposed budget as it was presented. Real estate tax equals 92 cents per $100 of assessed value, no change there. Downtown service district tax remains unchanged at 15 cents per $100 of assessed value. Personal property tax remains unchanged at $2.90 per $100 of assessed value. And machinery and tool tax remains unchanged at $1.24 per $100 of assessed value. Slide Four looks at proprietary funds. Water rates proposed remain unchanged, sewer rates unchanged, stormwater fees unchanged, and parking fees unchanged. Environmental fund rates are proposed to increase by 15%. Residential rates are proposed to increase from $20.88 per month to $24.01 per month. On Slide Five, since the introduction of the proposed 2023 budget on March 24th, 2022, there have been multiple modifications. Modifications includes an increase in the education transfer from the city's general fund in the amount of $365,237. The total transfer has been raised from 14.7 to 15.065, and this fully funds the schools' FY 2023 budget. Animal shelter funding has increased from 139,695 to 152,240, an increase of 12,545. The Middle River Regional Jail budgeted increase has been revised downwards from a budgeted increase of 307,496 to an increase of 273,139. FY 23's budget equals 3.1 million. Social service expenditures have decreased by 33,966. This has been offset by a reduction in revenue reimbursements. We have added a negative contingency of 309,459 built into our 2023 budget in order to balance the budget. And finally, water fund allocations of 782,370 have been adjusted and are included in the internal transfer section of the budget, as has been historical practice. The bottom line with the water fund has not changed the net cost. On Slides Six and Seven, we review some of the sections incorporated into the ordinance that you will be voting on. Section One quantifies the entire amount of the FY 23 budget for the schools, city, and proprietary funds, the amount of 142,185,506. Section Two provides for a 75% appropriation of the city budget and 100% appropriation of the education budget, less 25% general fund transfer to the education fund. Subsequent appropriations are to be brought before council no later than February 2023. And again, this is being done to provide council with flexibility to adjust spending as it sees fit. Section Three establishes the real estate tax rate at 92 cents per $100 of assessed value. Section Four establishes a personal property and machines, tools taxes at $2.90 and $1.24 per $100 assessed value respectively. These taxes remain unchanged. Section Five and Six provides for service charges to be levied on certain tax-exempt properties, to include Mary Baldwin and Potomac Conference Center. Rate equals 19 cents for $100 assessed value and 48 cents for $100 of assessed value for faculty and staff housing of educational institutes. Section Nine establishes the annual salary for council. This has not changed. Section Ten provides flexibility for the city manager to reallocate fund appropriations between lines during the course of the year or withhold expenditures deemed to be in the best interest of the city. Under this, council will still retain the right to disperse funds as they deem appropriate. Sections Eleven and Twelve states that any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance is repealed to only the extent that such a conflict exists. Finally, any part of this ordinance found to be invalid by a competent authority does not invalidate the remaining aspects of the ordinance. Slides Eight provides a breakdown between the total 2023 proposed budget and the amount scheduled to be appropriated with a 75% appropriation. The proposed budget equals 142.2 million, and 75% of the appropriation of this amount will equal 113.8 million. This is for the city funds, 100% for the school funds, less the 25% adjustment for the local transfer, and 75% for the proprietary funds. Again, supplemental appropriations recommendations will occur no later than mid-February. And Slide Nine is just a summary of what we said above. So we'll be happy to field any questions before Mr. Johnson takes over the podium.
All right, are there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I just want to get this question asked on page Five.
Okay.
Or Slide Five, as you call it.
Okay.
Can you, on the third bullet point, can you explain why that the Middle River Regional Jail, which it's been revised downward?
I know, that's unusual.
Since it's been coming up.
Yes, that's unusual.
But it's actually going down. I'd love to have an explanation.
Yeah, they repurposed some locally funded positions, two locally funded positions, and they transferred those individuals into deputy positions, which are being reimbursed by the comp board. So the staffing level stays unchanged, stays the same, they're just repurposing it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is Brenda Mead.
Yes, ma'am.
On Point Number Five, aspects of the 2023 budget ordinance. Sections Five and Six provide for service charges to be levied on certain tax-exempt properties, to include Mary Baldwin and Potomac.
Yes, ma'am.
Are those new?
No. This has been in there, this has been an item that's been a part of the code for some time.
So we haven't changed anything with this?
Oh, no, ma'am. Thank you. Okay.
Great. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, is that comparable to what's going on in Florida right now?
Oh, no. With the separate. No, no, that's totally different.
So explain how this works. I mean, I had the same question when I saw it.
Yeah, there's still some costs associated with city services, and while they get a significant break, at some point, the council, and I think this stems back 20 years, did assign a certain value to pay for the police and fire services, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else? All right, so I have a question. Page Four, the environmental fees are proposed to increase by 15%.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just touch on what's driving this increase?
CIP requirements primarily at the landfill. Locally, we do have some CIP requirements with heavy equipment, but we have, coming up in '23, Phase Five construction at the landfill, you know, Phase Five of the landfill cells, and that's a $4 million item. And then, beginning in '24, we begin the process of relocating the scales and building a new office complex, not a huge office complex, but the trailer-type thing that they're working at now is very tired, has holes in the wall, it needs help. And that scale is actually going to provide some additional safety features because folks are backing out, backing up onto the street, and it is creating traffic hazards, and people going in and out with the one lane, they're not capturing all the revenues. So we think ultimately, we're going to be able to capture some more revenues with an in-and-out lane.
Okay.
They're actually going to put a scale in when you come out of there as well, yeah.
Exactly.
I can't understand how they lasted all these years without that.
Long overdue.
So this is actually being driven by the agreement between Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County, this, I mean, to take care of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And this was deferred. It was intended to increase last budget.
Yes, yeah. Absolutely right.
So otherwise, it might have been an 8% increase.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Holmes?
Yeah, I thought we were going to, we were talking, we're going to talk about increasing water and sewer rates, so we're not going to, because, didn't you say if we didn't reduce, we did do it this year, we'd have next year, it'd be even, it would be a bigger amount?
You know, yes, we are applying for multiple grants with the infrastructure. In fact, we have a bid that's going out for Gardner Springs. It's pretty much prepped right now. We're going to ask for two responses for the vendors, one with federal requirements and one without. A lot of these federal requirements, the state's going to require us to have if they are going to award us the grant. So if we are successful in getting these grants, that's going to determine the amount, if any, that we need to increase our rates. Everybody is going to be going for these grants, it's going to be quite competitive. We have been told that Gardner Springs should score well, and we're actually going to submit a bid document for a quick review prior to publishing it to make sure that we capture all of the required elements that the state would be looking for ahead of time. So we are doing everything we can to try to grab some grant funding.
It just seems like, I just don't want it to jump up 20% next year, you know, and have everybody raised in hell, because, you know, 20% ain't that much when you look at the dollar amount, but when you say 20%, or, you know, even 15%, that raised a lot of hackles last year.
Yeah, we would stagger it if need be. We did have some prior debt service drop-off, so even if we don't get a grant for Gardner Springs, we have the capacity to cover Gardner Springs debt service. If we do get the grant, then we're going to look at maybe some of the eastern sector of the city and perhaps Phase One of the North River Pipeline.
I have a question.
Yes.
As far as the environmental fee increase, do you know if our neighbors are proposing the same type of things in their budgets?
I should have anticipated that question, and I didn't do the research. That's, I will find out, though. We will find out, and we will send an email to council tomorrow, because we're going to be on the phone first thing in the morning to answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, if not, then they may be playing catch-up, just like to Councilor Holmes's point, 15% this year or 20% next year?
Yeah. I have another question, too. When are we going to get the parking lots back up to where they're paying for themselves? Or paying a bit?
Yeah, that's a good question. The parking lot RFP, next question, no. The parking lot RFP has been the RFP from Hades. We are about halfway through. It seems, it seems like the more we dig into this, the more options that we have, but I have been working with Mr. Plowman, and he's putting together a lot of the technical aspects. We are 50% of the way through, a solid 50%. We really think this is going to go out in the very near future, and New Street is first on the list, and we're hoping that we're going to be able to capture enough to cash flow these things, so it's a good question.
Just a question, does the RFP include credit card processing for our lots?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It does, and that was initial holdup, trying to make sure that we had the proper processor, and then other things came about, and it's taken far longer than it should have, quite frankly. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Ms. Beauregard.
Okay. So, want to move on to recycling?
Mr. Johnson?
All right, let me get to his slides, and I'm also going to run his slideshow.
Okay. It's okay, I'll just do it from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Treier. Thank you. You're right ahead.
All right, so, you know, as we talked about last week, there's a lot of different options for recycling, and I think we talked about some of these, but I'm kind of trying to get them all into one, into one slide here. So the current proposed budget includes $132,000 to maintain our pilot program out at Gypsy Hill Park to cover our labor costs along with our non-labor costs, dumpster service, and some service on the equipment that we're still using out there. If we were to abandon that and go back to the curbside collection model that we were using prior to one July of 2021, that cost would be $323,000. That would include going out and finding, you know, the money to get the crews needed to start taking the trucks on their routes again around town every week, the additional wear and tear on those vehicles, fuel consumption, et cetera. If we were to do that and keep the recycling center, which would then allow for curbside collection, everything but plastic, and centralized collection of plastic, that number is 434. It's not quite the same as adding up the first two lines, because obviously, if we're collecting at the curve, there wouldn't be quite as much going down to Gypsy Hill. We would expect to spend a whole lot less emptying dumpsters and doing things that are tied to volume, as opposed to the fixed costs of the fixed costs, but we would expect that our variable costs would be less. So it is, it's more, but it's not quite the sum of the first two options. And the last one, and if I wanted to, I probably could have put an asterisk on every one of these numbers, because there's a lot of assumptions made, but this last one is doing curbside collection and taking plastic, which would require us to find, we have to pay someone to take our unsorted plastic and take it somewhere and get it sorted. The only vendor I've been able to find who would even entertain a conversation about that is Sunoco, and at now, at least for now, they're only going to quote a market price, so I can't really get my hands around what that cost would be. It would change over time. It's sort of like dealing with an Uber driver. The rates on one day may be different than the rates the next day, because it's all very market-driven. So I put that in at about 385.
Plus the market price.
No, no, the 385, making an assumption on the market price. So it would be a plus or minus on that figure based on what that market transportation rate is. Obviously, because recycling is part of the environmental fund, that money would have to be generated within the environmental fund. So from a environmental fee standpoint, and this, I may need Phil to come up and nod or shake his head or whatever, but going to, back to curbside at that 323 would be an additional 10%?
Approximately 10%.
About 10%, so instead of 15%, it would take 25%. And then, curbside, doing both, the curbside and the recycling center would be?
13%.
About 13%, and then the curbside would kind of fall between those. But of course, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, we could also mork that a little bit by, and I hate to bring this up, but delaying our capital improvement, the new, the new street sweeper, the things that are in our control, to stretch that out a little bit, but obviously, I wouldn't be a huge fan of that, but we can attack, we can attack both the numerator and the denominator to get at those funds. But the impacts, I mean, are not insignificant with those options. And then, as I mentioned last week, even with the money, there's still the challenge of turning those monies into bodies that are going to be able to, you know, meet those routes. Like I said, running a route is not, is a commitment to get to every driveway in town every week. And so I would have, it would be a daunting challenge to turn, to get the CDL drivers we'd need to drive the trucks, along with the additional loaders to load the trucks. If you have a question, that's.
Let's wait until.
Okay. You have seen these next slides before from my update in February, but just a reminder of the metrics that we are tracking on our pilot program. I am due to give you, once we get through the budget, I will be back in May with another quarterly update with the data running through March. And, but, you know, we're keeping in mind our participation, next one, our collection rates, both in terms of just straight tonnage, and then, next slide, in comparison with Harrisonburg and their central turn-in facility. And then, lastly, we're keeping tabs on our costs, on our labor and non-labor costs, which is obviously a function of how we're operating and what the price points are for the materials we're turning in. So that's sort of the metric package that we briefed when we started this, and that's still, that's still the information that we are gathering. And, you know, when we started this budget process, we really only had hardly even six months of data. I would think by the time the budget process for 2024 begins, we'll have close to 18 months, and we might be in a better position to make a proposal going forward. I know for one, can you go back to the participation slide?
We appear to drink three times as more than Harrisonburg.
We do. On a per capita basis, we do generate some glass. That dip from November to December, I'm curious to see if, how seasonal that is, if that's just, it's cold and it's, and folks aren't out doing their errands as much, so I'll be curious to see with that. And that's why we want to get a whole year's worth of data, so we can weed out what's seasonal and what's actually a trend. Mr. Claffey?
When you go back to the participants, the curbside was 21 to 81, and that would have been before this whole thing started.
Yeah, so that is an estimate, has an estimate based on how many households were regular participants in the curbside recycling program. It wasn't a scientific survey, it was, towards the end of curbside, we asked the crews to kind of try and get a feel for about how many households were participating, were regular participants in the.
How does that compare to the number of households that we picked the garbage up from now?
We've got, we've got, ballpark, we have about 10,000 refuse customers. So that's, well, that's total customers, so residential customers probably closer to 8, 8,500. So about a quarter, quarter.
Quarter we're actually participating.
That's our estimate, that's our estimate. I would not, I would, I would not put a whole lot of faith in that number, other than just to kind of get a ballpark, order of magnitude idea of. And of course, the other thing is, is that, those are individual customers, obviously, because they're individual addresses, and then, you know, our monthly visits, you know, that 2209 in July, I don't know if that's 22 people each coming 100 times, or 22, 2,200 individual people come.
I don't know.
We don't really track that as well. So these are very apple-orangey numbers. I'm really more interested in the trends than I am in the pre, than the curbside to collection comparison, but that's, that number was put there mostly for context, not really for analysis.
You don't have any way of knowing if it's a city participant or county? I mean, you don't check any of that?
We do not, we do not. We have put lots of signs up reminding folks that it is for, it is for the use of residents for Stanton, and when folks ask, we tell them that. But to some extent, you can't shame the shameless, and if they're willing to ignore the sign and what I tell them, and part of it is, I don't want to cast my guys in the bouncer role of checking IDs and, but, and I asked Harrisonburg that same question, aren't you concerned that you are getting non-residents? And they said it was, they didn't feel it was significant, and that, you know, the fixed costs are the fixed costs, and the variable costs were marginal enough that they didn't see them. Now, having said that, this would be a good time to point out that I will be meeting with the recycling coordinators for both Augusta County and Waynesboro in a couple of weeks to talk about getting them into the plastics business. Because if, in fact, non-Stanton residents are coming to Stanton, it's because we're taking plastic, because that's the one thing they can't turn in, in the county or in Waynesboro. So if, if, you know, we can sort of take that leadership role and help them expand into plastic, that would certainly reduce the impetus for someone to drag it all the way here when they could just as easily turn it in someplace closer. So, again, very tentative, you know, they are, they've been watching us very closely, and at the point now where they would like to talk to us perhaps about getting into the plastic business themselves.
Mr. Johnson, could you also, coming up with a, like a triumvirate, like, you know, with three communities, and you come up with maybe a greater quantity of plastic, you can maybe better, drive a better deal with?
It is an economy, it is an economy of scale business, so if we get to that point, that would be an option as well, to pool our, pool our quantities and our resources. That certainly would be an option. Baby steps, Vice Mayor, baby steps.
Has there been any more demand for plastic since gas has gone up, or is it still the same?
A couple of things there. Number one, the amount of plastic we generate probably isn't enough to, that we're going to notice macro trends in it, but not that we've noticed, the prices have been pretty stable. To be honest, the price that spiked the most recently is corrugated cardboard. That is turning into, that's, that price has gone up, and that is a big, when we pack that, that refuse truck full of cardboard, that's a, that's a lot of cardboard, and we get fairly well paid for that. So like that one.
Have you looked into any other sites as far as putting the recycling station?
Yes and no. So this is still only a pilot program, and, and we certainly would, as a pilot program, we don't have the resources to be out looking at real estate or, so, you know, as part of our pilot program, we are gathering data that lets us know that Gypsy Hill Park is probably not what we're looking for in a, for a mature program. But for now, we're just sort of building that list of the things that we would like. One that jumps to mind, because we had a lot of paper and cardboard sort of dumped on the ground this morning when we showed up, is would be with a little better security, or we could lock it up at the end of the night, not have to worry that someone's going to mess with it overnight. It needs to be a dedicated site, right? We're there in Gypsy Hill Park, we need to respect, and in many cases defer to, the other activities that are happening at the park. We don't, we can't just rule the roost out there. It would be nice to have area that was primarily dedicated to recycling, so we weren't subject to those. You know, lighting, access, drainage, again, it's like shopping for a house. You have your list of things you're looking for, and you may not get all of them, but you, you check for all of them. When we get to the point, if we get to the point, that the program matures. When we get to the point, if we get to the point that the program matures, that will be part of the discussion.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question about.
Yes.
And I think this was a, this came from a citizen at the last city council meeting during Matters from the Public who asked the question about a pilot program usually implying that there are certain goals or benchmarks that you wanted to reach before you stop calling a pilot and start calling it just what it is. So do you have anything in mind in terms of, how do you know when you've won?
Yes, to some extent, we did start the game while we were still striping the field. But I will say that I look at Harrisonburg, which has a much more robust program and mature program. They essentially have about a twenty-month head start on our program. So I look at certainly on their per capita rates as being a goal. If we can maintain those same per capita rates, that would tell me that we are certainly on a par with, with a more established program. And also, I'd like to see a positive trend in, in ideally a positive trend in both participation and collection, but primarily in collection, which is the much more telling statistic. When I was talking with, I talked a lot with Harrisonburg in the past week. And I told him, as we're seeing that little dip coming in December, and I'm not sure if it's seasonal, are they seeing seasonal dips? And they say they do see some, but they also said that when they started, there was a little dip and they attributed it to folks just getting a little more efficient in their visits, bringing more per visit. And so showing up, you know, so, and the, so the collections were very constant. And ours are relatively constant, even with our visits going down. So I would say a good positive trend in collections across all media and comparable per capita numbers for what Harrisonburg is doing. That would lead me to say that we have arrived at a sustain, a sustainable and competitive program.
And what are, off the top of your head, what are the Harrisonburg per capita rates?
Go back to that slide. Oh, there it is. So right now, we are out collecting, out collecting Harrisonburg and paper and yeah.
I can look back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to go to the last one?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilor Holmes.
Yeah, I just, is there any way of us linking with Harrisonburg and, and maybe joining in with them as far as getting rid of our plastic is a possibility?
For a while, we were both using the same supplier. We've now moved on to, we're now dealing with Snoco because they're closer and it cuts down on our transportation costs. But that option still exists if we, if, if we were using a common supplier to, to work together. For us, you know, the, the common supplier is in Harrisonburg. So for them, it's a very short jaunt. For us, it's a very expensive trip all the way up to Harrisonburg with our plastic.
As opposed to shipping it to Raleigh?
Well, again, they had, the one in Harrisonburg only takes it sorted. They will not take mixed. I mean, when I say that's, that's the only one I could find, that's really the only one I could find between Hagerstown, Rowan Oak and Richmond. That would take a mixed, mixed plastic.
And how many employees do you think you would have to add to, to make this work if we go back to pickup?
Four is the bare minimum, a driver and a loader on each truck. But of course, that doesn't, that, that puts you right at the ragged edge. So one, one person goes to the dentist and, and we end up borrowing labor from elsewhere. So, but that's the bare minimum we would need.
And you're down eleven, right?
Not in refuse, but across the, across public works, we're down eleven. I think we have two full-time vacancies currently in, in refuse and one part-time vacancy in recycling.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just want to make sure I understand it. I mean, I, the, the collection is a very wonderful goal, but it, but as I'm hearing, is it not true that if, if we collect, let's say we can't come up with an appropriate vendor or the, the game changes, then we basically are, we're collecting in a recycling program as far as plastics are concerned in name only. Because if we, if we collect it and we don't have the manpower or the people to sort it, then basically it's going to go on to the truck and it gets dumped in the landfill. Is that, is that what I'm hearing or is that not correct?
We would certainly not set a program up without the underpinnings that would allow us to get those materials back into the, into the supply chain. I mean, that is, and, and to be clear, nothing we collect pays for itself. So, you know, it, you know, everything we, we turn in, some things we, we get, you know, aluminum is probably the closest thing that comes to paying for itself. But even that doesn't cover the fixed and, and variable costs. So if the, if, you know, there is a viable market for sorted plastic. And it's, it's a difficult bar to reach, but so far we've managed to reach it. And we do get a little bit of revenue coming from our plastic. If we change that model to unsorted plastic, it will become much easier to collect. It's, we could in fact collect it from the curb, but it becomes much more difficult to recycle because now we have to, there's a huge transportation element, additional costs. And a sorting facility, even a top-notch sorting facility is going to have a rejection rate. You know, and they can be anywhere from twenty to as high as forty percent. That's just the, that's sort of the, the nature of the, of the sorting business. But no, we wouldn't, we would certainly never propose a, a program that was completely unsupported by our, our local market.
Well, I was just saying, if, if it fell apart.
If it fell apart, I mean, obvious, obviously if, and again, one of the advantages of having a central system, if, if, if the market for cardboard went away tomorrow, we would just stop taking it. We were fairly agile to that. And if it came back, we could start taking it again. But we certainly don't foresee that happening. We are collecting the items we are collecting because we are comfortable that we have a place to send them.
Councilor Holmes.
Yeah, I was just going, well, you, I think you kind of answered my question about, about the percentage that was kicked back. But with, with what you're gathering now, are you seeing a lot of problems with people throwing things in there that shouldn't be in there?
Yes and no. I mean, our, our attendants are there. So when things show up that aren't recyclable, that we divert them. So what we collect is very, very high quality.
See, if we throw waxed cardboard into a regular cardboard, it negates the whole load.
Can't, it can.
You know, so I don't know if, you know, and you know, a lot of stuff has produce or stuff on it or something like.
Every, every vendor has their own quality requirements. Some are more persnickety than others, but you have to meet their quality requirements if you want to do business with them. And that is what our attendants are there to make sure happens. And so, yes, we are, I mean, folks who go down, they'll realize that we are, we are very fastidious about plastic. And, you know, we keep an eye on the cardboard and the mixed paper, but not as closely because the tolerances there aren't as tight. But that is just of, that is merely reacting to the input we get from our vendors.
I would like to see the future seasonal collection of cardboard. No, Amazon did not ask me to ask that question.
I can tell you that the first few weeks after Christmas were very cardboard intensive down at the recycling, at this recycling center. All right. So the, the, the issue that I've been talking to Harrisonburg about a lot, and I'm talking to Harrisonburg because Harrisonburg really is the best, the best model for us to look at because they were doing curbside recycling and then had to transition to central turn-in when their contractor went out of business. So, so they sort of went through what we went through, but with a gun to their head. I mean, they really legitimately had no choice. So there's a lot of lessons learned there. And I talked to them about, you know, obviously there were folks who were left out when the transition went to curbside and what did they hear and what were they doing to address that? And so I'll walk through some of these, and these outreach options and you know, the first one is, is extended hours. And that's something that's always been in our plans to reestablish at least one night a week to stay open late for folks who can't get out in the weekends and can't get off, get out because of work. And that is, we've, the current budget, the proposed budget supports extended hours. We just need to turn those dollars into bodies so that we've got the bodies to do it. And if it seems like I'm being a little gun shy about rolling them out, it's because I am. I, I, I know once we provide those hours, there's no going back. And I don't want to be, I don't want to put any of us in the position of having to take that back. So until I'm confident that it's a sustainable, is a sustainable move, I'm going to hold off. But if we can get our, hire in another recycling attendant, get our hours staggered, provide a little bit of redundancy, a little bit of a, of a safety zone. So we're not one dentist appointment away from not being able to, to operate, we will start extending those hours. That is the easiest way to improve the outreach and it's the one that is already set in motion. One of the things that Harrisonburg has done is they, they have mobile turn-in locations. They have got a trailer with collection bins on it that they will take out to various locations around Harrisonburg on a regular schedule. Now, it's not getting to people's curb, but it's getting closer. So, you know, that's something we can look at. Now, we still have our trucks. So we still have the equipment that we would need to set up a mobile collection point. The issue is going to be labor because it would again, have to be tended. So any hours spent tending a mobile location would, unless additional labor is provided, come at the expense of that, those hours done at Gypsy Hill Park. But it is something that, again, it's, you know, the additional hours, additional labor, it's something that we, we could manage. We could, we could roll, we could roll it out in phases. We are looking at locations, city-owned property around the city where we could perhaps set up mobile collection. So that is something that, again, once we have the luxury of full staffing, we can try and work that into the mix. I can't say that's something that is fully supported by this, this current budget, but it is certainly something that we could look at and maybe try on a limited basis. And, and Harrisonburg, they, their mobile turn-ins are, are well, well utilized. One thing I will say that they experienced that we will experience as well is it is a very much a fixed sum game. So when the mobile site is full, it's full. There's no, and so even they'll even say, you know, we'll be out at eight o'clock until noon or until the trailer is full, whichever comes first. So it's, you know, and that's been a little bit problematic for them. Another thing they are doing that quite frankly, we are just now looking at based on our conversations with Harrisonburg is an assistance program. Harrisonburg residents who really feel like I just can't get to any of those sites, mobile sites or the fixed site, can apply for city assistance. It is, it's a fair, it's a fair amount of paper that they, they ask their assistants to submit with doctor's notes and other documentation. But residents who do that, Public Works will come to them and collect their recycling once or twice a week, depending on, on whatever is set up in their assistance plan. Now, they do that with their refuse enforcement team. They have employees who are going around the city checking on code enforcement, doing code enforcement along with refuse. Which is, it's part of their, they've gone to standardized cans and they've made some major changes to their solid waste program and, and, and so that's, there's some things in there that we're not going to be able to follow, but the assistance program, and I've got all their, I've looked, looking at all their forms. We could do that. Right now, my concerns are setting criteria. What those criteria are, I certainly don't want it to be a, a subjective decision that's made in public works as to who gets assistance and who doesn't. And so we wouldn't want to set criteria. Harrisonburg really, they don't have any written criteria as to who gets it and who doesn't. And then again, that would require, we'd have to figure out where that labor is coming from because we don't have those enforcement folks already driving around town the way Harrisonburg does.
That'd be a couple more people.
Potentially. That becomes a fun, that is essentially all variable cost. So it's a function of how many folks sign up for assistance. The fixed costs as far as, you know, trucks were relatively straightforward. But no, that, there's some additional cost.
Just mentioned trucks. Now, what's, how much life do you think we got in our trucks now? I mean, when we talked about this before, we were saying we needed a new truck. And then you said they've been parked, so they haven't been worked, I mean, been used.
No, again, if, if we're using them, if we're using them on curbside recycling, then we're back to the same, we're, we're going to be back in the same glide slope we were before. If we use the trucks for mobile turn-in locations, they'll get a little bit more mileage than they're currently getting, but certainly not the kind of mileage you get running the route every week. So the, yeah, the more we, obviously, the more we use the trucks, the faster that, that curve will start to decay. But so it's kind, it sort of depends on where we go from here. The last, the last option, and I will going to say right up front that I am not a fan of this option in any way, shape or form, but there are cities using it. And I want to, I want to lay it out in front of you so you know what I'm talking about. It would be a straight-up opt-in program. Whereas recycling is something that folks can choose to do or not choose to do. And if they choose to do it, it's added to their bill. And if they don't choose to do it, it's not added to their bill. The required, would require us to partner with a recycling service. I know Recyclops is doing business here in our area, but there are other business, other ones out there we could, we could use. And essentially the city just becomes a pass-through. You sign up through the city, we, you become an, you become a customer of that service and whatever that service costs is added to your bill. I can give you a handful of reasons why I don't think that's a good idea. First and foremost is there's, city has no value added to that proposition. If you, you know, you pay the exact same amount dealing directly with them as you would coming through us. So there's no benefit to the citizen to coming through the city. We end up, the city ends up being the, in the collection agent for the, for the vendor. So when someone, you know, doesn't pay their, doesn't pay the utility bill, you know, the vendor can't turn their water off, but we can. So we become the thug who's now rousting people to get this contractor's money, which I'm not a big fan of. Secondly, if, if we're the one who's, who they're paying the money to, we're the one who are going to get the complaints when the, when the driver steps in the petunias or other things happen that we have no control over. It's just a, it's just not an idea. But I will tell you, there are municipalities out there who are doing it and, and, and who, who tell me that it's quite popular. I will tell you that most of them are communities that had no recycling. And, you know, and have, have rolled this out as an attempt to have some recycling and then sort of taking credit for it. I'm not interested in getting credit for anything. I know that at the current rate, the current market rate that Recyclops is using here, it would be about $200 a year. So it would essentially double. You would have to, you would double what you were paying in environmental fee. And remember, the environmental fee is not a recycling fee. In fact, there's, there's no set recycling fee. The environmental fee covers all of our solid waste programs. So, you know, if we got out of the recycling business, it may, it certainly wouldn't slash that environmental fee. It would change it a bit. So my fear is, is that if we, if we put that price tag on recycling, fewer people would recycle. Just for, you know, financial reasons. And that has impacts to the city writ large. From a public works standpoint, the less people recycle, the more my guys got to pick up every, every day, every week on the curb. From a larger aspect, the more we send to the landfill, the more we have to pay for the landfill. Our fair share of those CIP issues at the landfill is set by how much tonnage we send. And if we send more, then our share goes up. So it has big picture fiscal aspects. And lastly, as a part owners of that landfill, we should all want it to last as long as it can. And if, if we do anything that discourages recycling, and this is not, I'm not talking about the merits of recycling, I'm talking about just the nuts and bolts of owning a landfill. We should want as little to go into that landfill as possible. I know 2057 seems like a long way away. But if we can somehow move 2057 to 2058 or to 2062, none of us will be around to. 2062, none of us will be around to take the accolades, but people will be glad we did that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dome.
Carolyn?
I have several questions. How many city employees are used to pick up trash regularly?
Well, we've got 15 positions, but we can normally get the routes done with 12 or But there are 15 positions, but we, four trucks, four trucks can can cover, can cover all the routes in a given day with a driver and two loaders. We have the, if 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 everyone's on board, we can run a fifth truck to hit the schools and the parks and 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 help out a little bit. So that's so, so a bare minimum 12.
And that's all but? And that's all they do? They don't ever do any other work, just pick up trash?
They will plow snow if needed, but that is in lieu of picking up trash, not in addition to picking up trash.
So, so they work a 10-hour day and they're picking up trash for 10 hours?
They work a, they work all their routes. Sometimes it takes 10 hours, sometimes it doesn't take 10 hours. But but sometimes it takes more than 10 hours, like Monday because of the snow. So.
Okay, have you considered that recycling could be bi-monthly and not necessarily every week?
Yes, we have. We have considered that. That would certainly cut down on the routes that are run, but it is to some extent a zero-sum game in that we'll be collecting twice as much at each location. And it's the loading that is the time-consuming part of of the route. So it obviously wouldn't, you know, doing it bi-weekly would not, it would not take twice as long to get around the routes, but it would take longer. And our concern is that we were barely getting the recycling trucks around the routes. You know, there, I've got four refuse trucks running those routes. I have two recycling trucks covering those same routes. So the recycling trucks have to cover twice as much territory every day as the refuse trucks. So the concern would be if we did it bi-weekly, that it, again, and then, and again, I'm not pretending like there's a calculation I can do that would let me know exactly how much longer it would take. But assuming that everyone would be putting twice as much out, it would take a little bit longer to get the trucks around and they would fill up and.
Well, I can tell you previously, we were told, don't bother putting the recycling out unless you've got a full bin. So, you know, if I've got four glass jars, I'm not going to put that, I didn't put that out until I had more in it. And that's what they preferred, rather than having to pick up all the individual bins that only had a few items in it, so wait till they're full to put them out. So that's why I thought, well, bi-weekly would probably work for most people.
Again, for some, for some folks, bi-weekly is going to fit their, their, the sort of the recycling rhythm of their household better than others. So, yeah, I would, you're, you're correct.
Well, yeah, I think, I feel sorry for all our businesses who the centralized recycling doesn't work well at all for them. And I'll also say the opt-in program, while you may not like it, that is at least fair for those who are unable to recycle under the the centralized recycling.
No, that is, that is, that is very true. And in an opt-in program, no one pays for anything they don't use and no one uses anything they don't pay for. So that would be the one big advantage.
If we don't have any plan for for the elderly, disabled, people with no vehicles, you know, that is at least fair, is is let them not have to pay for it. And I, you know, I I would love to see some real data, but we've got nothing to compare it to curbside recycling. And I'm quite sure we're picking up extra Augusta County stuff that we're, we're taking. And I, you know, I just don't see why we don't consider, you know, how how long do we have to do this pilot program? And and you're comparing us to Harrisonburg when actually it would have been helpful to compare it to our curbside recycling? Then we would have known whether we were doing better or.
Well, we are, we are comparing our collection amounts to curbside recycling, and then that, and that, I think, is an absolutely valid comparison. The only thing we can't really compare.
Have you given us that? I haven't seen, I I don't recall seeing a collection with curb, with our Stanton's curbside to centralized.
Let's go back to that, to the collection, right there. So this slide starts in January of 21, so it's six months of curbside followed by six months of central. That's why the the plastic, the plastic number ticks along is zero until July, and then it it starts jumping up. So it is, and it's a, it's a little all over the place, but I think with a little more time, we can start doing some running averages and help smooth out some of those herky-jerky motions and and hopefully identify some trends. So what we were told, what we, what we were told by Harrisonburg was to expect about between a 50 and 50 and 60% drop-off in collections when we went from curbside to central. And it has not been that bad. We obviously, in 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 some areas, we've seen a larger drop-off than others. But so we'll continue, we will continue to collect that data and compare it to the what we were seeing curbside as well.
Even though we're now collecting county recycling, so we're never going to have apples to apples?
No, that's, that's a good point. Like I said, there, we, we, I know anecdotally, we're getting county stuff, but I really have no way to quantify it.
Terry?
What do you, what do you do when you fill up a truck, then you ship it out? Or so where do you store this stuff until you?
So with the, with with the dumpsters we're using now, one of the great conveniences is when they're full, truck comes and hauls them off to our vendor, dump, weighs them, dumps them and brings back the empty dumpster. We do a lot, we try and do a lot of that on Wednesdays when we're not closed so we can, but so it doesn't end up operations, but that's effectively the model. Now, the plastic, which is, we're sorting and putting in the truck, when the truck is full, it goes up to dumpsters up at Public Works where we 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 store it until we have a full dumpster load and then it's, it's moved out. I hope to continue to work with our dumpster supplier to get the locking dumpsters we need to maybe get that last truck out of there as well and go with an entirely dumpster-based because it really streamlines the transportation. It goes, it goes, it goes straight from the collection point to the vendor. It'll come in with a, come in with a dumpster truck, pick it up and drive it off. And it's, it's about a 25, 30-minute round trip. So it's very efficient.
Are there any other questions or comments?
If we were to consider the opt-in program, I would also like for us to consider the assistance program. But out of all these options, I do agree, the easiest does seem to be the extended hours. And that, to me, would have the quickest turnaround. So as far as being able to get it, activate it.
And let me say, and this is, this is something I'll probably go, I'll go over in a little more detail when I do my quarterly update. We continue to look for ways to be quicker, be better. I mean, I would hope that folks who are coming out now will realize that our our throughput are, is much, much better since we've been able to replace some of those trucks with dumpsters. We've also been able to reduce our footprint a little bit and give a little more space back to parks and recs. So, you know, these sort of, you know, big outreach options will continue to go after, but we're also going to continue to, to, you know, tweak the program to get it as as efficient and effective as we can. So there'll be more of those changes coming as we move forward.
Actually picking up, did they, did they keep any records then about what went where and and or anything like that?
What we were, as far as what the vendors were doing with it?
Well, yeah, I mean, what we were picking up, I mean, like the plastic, they would think.
We would, we would get, we would get the tickets from when we turned it in. All right, so we would get our, we would get our weights each month of what we've collected. We weren't really sure where it was, you know, so the question is, where is it coming from? Is it coming from downtown? Is it coming from the businesses? Is it coming from residents? Not really. We would just get a rolled-up number, you, you gave me this much cardboard, this much aluminum, et cetera, et cetera. And if, I guess if I needed to, I could go back and pull all the tickets and and look, go day by day how much we collected, but I don't, I know I haven't done that level of analysis on those old tickets.
Any additional questions or comments? Well, thank you. Right, Mr. Regard?
That's all we have for this evening.
All right.
Unless there's, unless there's other questions, you all are scheduled to consider the budget at your next meeting on April 28th. So some of this you'll see again, just for the public's sake. And 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 then you'll consider the budget and that will be it for FY '23.
Right. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments concerning other avenues of the budget? All right, well, hearing none, I call the Stanton City Council Budget Work Session Meeting of February, excuse me. I'm either behind or early, one or the other, April 21st, 2022 adjourned.